It's called the Johnston City Council Meeting number 22-15 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Rucker?
Here.
Evans?
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience with us this evening. If you're here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask our former city council member, Dave Lindeman, who is appropriately dressed for this responsibility this evening, to lead us in the pledge. I did notice that one of our other former city council members went like this when his name wasn't called out. Next time. That's right. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. The applicant has asked to have Item 7D Greenwood Hills class six removed from the agenda this evening. Cindy, any other changes to the agenda? Council, any changes? Seeing none, with removal of 7D, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Rucker?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, we have one listed public communication this evening, and that is an update from the American Legion Post 728.
I am Dave Lindeman, and I was recently elected the commander of the Richard G. Lever American Legion Post 728 here in town. And when I tell people that, they say, "We have an American Legion post here in town." And we do, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about it in just a minute. I'm not going to cover everything on the slides, though, because there's a lot of details there.
Well, Cindy's pulling that up. Dave, who is Richard Lever?
I'll tell you.
Yeah, that's slide four.
Quick history of American Legion. In 1919, in March of 1919, a bunch of guys that were in World War I were in Paris at a cafe discussing, "How do we keep the camaraderie? How do we take care of our fallen, the families of the fallen veterans that we had together?" And they came up with the idea to have a legion similar to the Roman Legions, and it would be made up of members that were in World War I. The history goes on through there a little bit, but it was, to me, it was kind of surprising. It was pretty quick. From 15 to 17 March to 16 September, they'd already pushed through Congress a charter to have the American Legion a fully chartered entity within the United States. Legislatively, that's pretty quick. Paying attention to veterans and veterans' issues throughout the decades have been what the American Legion has done. The current Veterans Administration was started with an idea from the American Legion and has continued on to where it is now. So Richard G. Lever, he was drafted in 1967, and he died in 1968 in Vietnam. He would push to the next slide, please. He was an indirect fire specialist, and he died from indirect fire. He lived, he grew up at 4625 Northwest Beaver Drive, which, if you cross the bridge on Lower Beaver into Johnston, there is an old shell of a vehicle by the Beavordale Little League. That was his farmstead, where his family lived from there. So he is a member of what would become Johnston, but it was before Johnston was Johnston. He was drafted, he went to Dowling, a couple of years at Drake, and then died of wounds on 14 July of 1968. Our post was chartered in 1980. We have held meetings at Camp Dodge, Crown Point, Simpson Barn. When I became commander, I've got three boxes of documents and things, so I started going through and trying to outline a history, and this is about what I came up with. In 2011, we went dark for a little bit because of membership issues. We had some extra funds that we donated towards the memorial that's on the first slide up there, that's up at the library as well, too. And then there was a few people that thought we really should get back active again, and so we became active again in about 2017. And we are made up of a lot of different components. The American Legion is chartered through Congress, and so is the Legion Auxiliary. The Auxiliary doesn't, isn't a subset of the Legion, it's their own thing. It's the spouses of Legion members. And then the Legion Riders and the Sons of the American Legion are a lower entity of or a part of the American Legion, so there's a tie in there. And we do community events, participate in the Green Day Parade. Three times a year, we go out to the cemeteries here in Johnston, and if you'll see, sometimes you'll see an American Legion stand next to a tombstone or headstone. That's, we put a flag in that, and that's how we identify our veterans that are buried here in town. So we do it on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Veterans Day. We go out and do that. We have the poppy sales, and then Legion baseball. We've had a pretty successful Legion baseball team a couple, three years ago. Coach Bart had backed off from that a little bit, but I've had some discussions with him and might start soaking back up this spring. We have running issues with the Legion schedule competing with the high school schedule, and I think the high school schedule is probably a little bit more important for them, which I fully understand. What I got here is both the national vision statement and what our vision statement is. So nationally, the American Legion is veterans' strength in America. For us, it's veterans strengthening our community. We really want to be more of a community organization than what we have been. The mission to enhance the well-being of Americans, veterans, their families, our military, and our communities by our devotion of mutual helpfulness. We want to enhance the well-being of our post members, their families, and our community through engagement at the public, educational, and governmental levels. So we want to be into the community, we want to be a part of the community, help you out with what you need help with. We say our principles are veterans, selfless service, American values and patriotism, family and community engagement, advancing our vision, and honoring those who came before us. As veterans, we hold some things pretty close to our heart, the Constitution, and service towards the communities is some of those things. American values and patriotism speaks towards, mouths towards no one, education, passing traditions toward youth, honoring our military heritage through memorities and ceremonies. Family engagement, when we have a veteran that has lost a family, excuse me, when we have a family that's lost a veteran, we take care of the families. There are several different scholarship funds and other grants that are available for families out there for fallen. Family community engagement is also ensuring that we are in the community, we are thought of. When I was growing up, I grew up in Humboldt, Iowa, when I was growing up, we had a Legion Hall that was on downtown Main Street, and that Legion Hall hosted pancake breakfasts and fish fries and steak fries and dances and weddings and all kinds of celebrations. We want to be a part of that as well in this community. Eventually, we'll get there. So against, it comes to my three goals. Increase for our membership. We're about 48 strong right now. 10% is my goal. I think I might have already hit that. If that just means we work harder to get 20% and keep moving on. Increase community engagement, that's one of the reasons I'm here. We need to become more involved in some of the things the city has going on, some flag raises, some flag ceremonies, perhaps maybe doing a Memorial Day and a Veterans Day presentation or honor at either here at City Hall or up at the library where the memorial is. Being a little bit more involved in that. And then increase member participation. I'm reaching out to all of our current members and engaging with them to have them be a little more active. Typical with any other volunteer organization, you get the same 10, 15 people. How do we engage? What can we do to get more people engaged to be active in it, which then allows us to do more within the city itself as well, too? Considering holding our meetings every month, we don't. We go every other month part of this because of participation. So if we hold meetings every month, we might get a little bit more people to come, and we will go dark in the wintertime. We had a few snowbirds. We don't have as many snowbirds anymore. So instead of going dark through the wintertime, perhaps maybe we can stay busy and active through the wintertime as well, too. Maybe we can participate in the Johnston Christmas or the holiday festivities around the first December. Finally, we need to find a building. We have been, we have had very gracious hosts. The city has been a gracious host. The Lions Club is a gracious host. But we don't have a place to call home ourselves, and we have a need for that. I have some thoughts. I have some ideas with this going into the phase two of your town center here, where maybe we could fit in and help the city in a partnership, private public partnership with a building and an activity hall, things to do with that building. I've had some discussions with some people with that. I anticipate more discussions going forward, but it's something to think about as we move forward. Oh, our officers. Myself, I don't know if anybody knows any of these names, Bobby Jones, John Kerber's been around forever, Matt Wolf has as well, Doug Ruston, Jeff Lewis works out at Camp Dodge, and then Mike Beaman is our current adjutant. As is, again, with any volunteer organizations, once you take a leadership role, you kind of have that leadership role for a while. Mike Beaman's been the adjutant for about five or six years. And in the American Legion, the adjutant is pretty much the glue that holds everything together. They are the adjutant, the treasurer, the secretary, the whole nine yards. So we need to find somebody to help Mike out, because he's been around for a while, so we're looking for that. Anybody who knows a veteran that wants to be a part of our organization, participate, just let us know. It's really easy. It's an online, legion.org, click yes, pay $40, and you're good for a year. Next slide. Our programs, family and youth baseball, Boys State, which happens out here at Camp Dodge, there is a junior shooting sports, and there's an oratorical contest. This slinger's oratorical contest winner was a high school junior in Indiana, $25,000 scholarship. And as you make your way along in this process, there are scholarships awarded. So the local gets a 500, the district gets a thousand, the state gets 2,000. So all that's cumulative, it all piles up and adds up. I think by the time the individual was done, there was about $37,000 worth of scholarship for him, and they totaled that, they rolled into. So that's a good year at college, too, if you go to a state school. Community, Family Support Network, and there's an amateur radio network out there, working with the homeless veterans and the Stand Down, the Homeless Veterans Stand Down that happens in September happens also. And then Operation Comfort Warriors, which is part of what, part of our helping out veterans' families who no longer have a veteran with them. And then the education portion of it. There's a fifth grade flag essay contest where fifth graders write a 100 to 200-word essay on the flag and what it means to them, and they can receive prize money from that, too. Veterans presentations in the school for Veterans Day or other holidays. And then there's a lot of scholarships that the VA offers, not only to veterans' families, but to anybody out there that wants to help be a part of what the Legion is. And now questions.
Council, any questions for Dave?
I'd like just to say thank you for all you guys do, and it's, I really admire what you guys do. Question, though. So you said, "Looking for a membership, the membership should be a veteran already?"
A veteran, yeah. Well, you can be a veteran or currently serving.
I was thinking of doing something for you, but I'm not, so I can't do much about it. But in a way, it's something that we can individually can support you. Let me know, I can try something else.
Certainly, thank you.
Dave, you've mentioned kind of briefly the Boys State, and I participated in Boys State. I, like you, grew up in a small town in northwest Iowa, and my, the first time I ever came to Johnston was in the summer of 1985 to go to Boys State at the barracks at Camp Dodge. And so it is, Boys State is a real opportunity for our community. I know, I think the mayor participates a lot in different activities as it relates to that, so, because it brings in, and I'm not sure if Girls State is held here or if it's considered a fall.
Girls State's usually you and I.
Okay. But it's a wonderful kind of opportunity for young, young, young boys from around the state of Iowa to get exposed to Johnston. So it's an outstanding week-long program and really a great, a great thing that the Legion does.
They just got out of Boys Nation. Two, two people from each Boys State advanced to Boys Nation as well, too. That was Indianapolis.
Councilmember Martin? Is there any women veterans in your group?
There are. We have, you're going to put me on the spot here. I want to say, out of the 48, I want to say eight women veterans in our group right now. I got to verify that, but yeah, there are women veterans and a veteran's a veteran. That is not.
Great, thank you.
Unless they're Navy, and I, I don't, just kidding.
Something for you to think about, Dave, and it kind of ties in with what Councilman Cope just commented on, and that is Boys State. Earlier this evening, I made a presentation on our sister-city relationship with Kosovo and, you know, some additional activities that we want to do in that relationship. Someone suggested to me last week, and I think this is a great idea, you know, we're always, we're always trying to figure out ways to have youth exchanges, and someone suggested, "Well, wouldn't it be fun to have a couple of Kosovo boys come over and participate in the week-long Boys State and give them a good, good, good sense of what local government in Iowa is all about?" So that's something that I think that maybe we can, we can talk about and figure out how we might be able to make that happen next year.
I will definitely look into that. Todd Jacobus is a member of our, our American Legion.
You know, I think the idea came from him.
I know. So I'll work with Mr. Jacobus.
Yeah, that would be great.
If there's nothing else, thanks.
Thank you.
We're here for you. Let us know.
Great presentation, great update on what's going on.
Thank you.
We're still under public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to present to the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Cindy, do we have anybody online? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, and we have two public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 22-186, granting a gas main easement to Mid-American Energy within Outlot 2 of the Johnston Town Center. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:20. Do we have somebody that's going to present on this? Clayton? Clayton, are we waiting for you? It's all right. We've opened the public hearing for item 4A.
This is a fairly straightforward item. Mid-American Energy is in need of gas main easement to serve the two commercial buildings currently under construction in the Johnston Town Center. This is, because it's being granted on property owned by the city of Johnston, it requires the public hearing, thus why we are here tonight. The easement would not impact any other utilities, it would not impact our ability to maintain or reconstruct any infrastructure we otherwise have in those areas. Happy to go into further detail or answer questions as needed.
Council, have any questions for Clayton?
Clayton, just trying to figure out, so it looks like these are two easements, they're just basic, pretty small, right?
Yes.
They kind of run off the main line and connect to the building?
Yeah.
And probably 10 feet wide with, in total, or something like that, roughly?
Yeah. One of the main reasons we need them is because the way we plotted the lots here, they don't actually attach to the public right away. There's a section of outlot that they have to go through.
Okay.
Are there questions for Clayton? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Online? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing then at 7:22. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-186? Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Rucker?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 22-194 relating to the holding of a public hearing and approving taking additional action for the issuance of revenue bonds or notes. Life Serve Blood Center project in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $28 million.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I will open the public hearing at 7:23.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce to you Chris Kuhn from the Dorsey Law Firm, who's going to present this information regarding this conduit financing for, for this project.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Chris Kuhn. I'm with Dorsey and Whitney. We're bond counsel on this financing, and this is the time for the public hearing on the issuance of conduit bonds. The city has the authority to issue bonds on behalf of certain entities, and those are, include 501(c)(3) nonprofit. If the project is located in the city or within eight miles of the city, it's based upon both federal law as well as state law. And similar to when you issue bonds for a street project, you have to hold a public hearing, and that's the step that we're at for these conduit bonds. The conduit bonds are, while it's issued by the city, you're not responsible for repayment. Life Serve. The terms of the financing are solely negotiated between the lender and Life Serve. The city does not use any of its funds, no tax dollars go to these types of bonds. Where it impacts the city is on your bank qualification limit, your $10 million bank qualification limit each calendar year, and you've already issued over that amount, so that does not impact you this year. It does not count against your constitutional debt limit, it's not considered a debt of the city. You're simply a conduit to allow Life Serve to borrow money on a tax-exempt basis. So that's the, the legal basis for the, why we're here and the public hearing itself. Regarding the project, it's moving the headquarters from downtown out to the city of Johnston, and we have representatives here if you'd like to hear more about the project or if the public has any question about the project. And I'm happy to answer any legal questions as well.
Council, have any questions for Chris?
No legal questions, but would love to hear more about the project at that time is right.
Stacy, who will talk to you about the project?
Hi, I'm Stacy Seim, president and CEO of the Blood Center. So what a lot of people don't realize is that the Blood Center was actually formed in 1947. So we're a 75-year nonprofit. We were formed by a grocer by the name of Ike Small, who was actually using his customers to fill the needs that the hospitals had for patients until it became too overwhelming. So they formed the Blood Center with Mr. Small being the very first executive director. What we'll be doing at this facility is we'll be moving our corporate headquarters, but also our manufacturing locations. So there is, once someone donates, and most of you have donated blood, there are steps that we take in a laboratory. So most, most of the first floor of the building will be either a laboratory, a supply room, or a donor center. So we'll be moving a donor center to Johnston. Johnston is the largest city that we have that does not currently have a donor center of its own. So communities like Pella, Yankton, South Dakota, Marshalltown all have fewer donors but have donor centers. And so when the opportunity to move to Johnston came, this was a perfect lot for us and a perfect city for us because of that natural connection. About 880 of your residents are current blood donors donating about 1,900 units a year. There are 30 groups in the city of Johnston that actually sponsor blood drives. Over 20 blood drives have been held to date this year, donating about 500 units of blood. The facility will be 560 square feet, or 500, that was really bad, wasn't it? 56,000 square feet, it's not that tiny. It's not a tiny house. It's much bigger than that. So 56,000 square feet on two levels. The top level will be really all offices. The bottom level will be our manufacturing site, a donor center, the supply room. One of the very cool things about this facility is it will have Level 7 clean rooms. So one of the things most people don't realize that we do is we actually do cancer treatment. Currently, when someone has prostate cancer, they come into the Blood Center, we collect their white blood cells, but because we do not have clean rooms, we have to actually ship that to a, a manufacturing place in New Jersey. In the future, we'll be able to do that stuff right here in Johnston, and so we're going to be able to elevate and prepare for the future as well as really be set for what's going on in blood donation in general. This is the only 24-hour facility we have. One of the things we're wanting to make sure that we do is really honor the history of this location. We all, or many of us are very familiar with Herd Gardens, and although we would have liked to be able to keep every single tree on that property, it just was not possible when you're putting that large of building with a parking lot. But we are able to keep some key trees on that lot, and we've committed to planting the trees, enough trees to replace the trees that are going down. And in fact, in the last few weeks, we actually had a Johnston resident by the name of Al Walter, who contacted me to let me know that he had grown or purchased from Herd Garden many years ago the coffee trees, and he loves them, and he has now grown us four little 12-inch coffee trees. So we're going to be planting his coffee trees in addition to the rest of the trees. The other very cool feature of the facility will be a donor garden that will connect to the bike trail and to the sidewalk. This will be an area where families of blood donors or families of blood recipients will be able to purchase the trees, the garden, other garden items, the sculptures, the, benches, and that will be an open community garden where we'll be able to honor blood donors and blood recipients. Questions for me or Mr. Brown regarding the project?
Council, have any questions?
Can you paint for us a little bit of a picture as far as, you know, overall number of employees, but also what you envision for the visits that would come here on a daily basis, just so we can kind of hear what kind of traffic this may generate in what I'll call a positive environment to Johnston?
Great question. So in total, we have 340 team members. About 200 of them will call this location their home. It is important to note, you have to think of mobile blood drives. So if you really want to talk about capacity in that building for a whole workday, it's only about 20% of that, but a significant number of those people will come to Johnston, will park their car, and then might hop in a vehicle and drive in one of our vehicles to Corteva or Johnston High School to have a blood drive, or they could drive to some other community. So I think we'll bring people in that way. So it's 200 people that will call this location their home. In a donor center, we would anticipate to see between 50 and 75 blood donors a day, six days a week. And so it will bring some capacity into Johnston. The other thing that's going on right now is Johnston, your Johnston residents are currently going to Urbendale to donate. The most popular location for Johnston residents to donate is our Urbendale Donor Center, and so the good news is I think we'll be able to bring them back and let them donate in Johnston. And then I would anticipate we'll pull other people that are currently going to Urbendale or Ankeny and keep them in Johnston, and so they'll be able to come in and donate and hopefully then do some of the other cool things that are in Johnston.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I just want to say, you know, Johnston has a lot of pride about our kind of, all the great science and research that occurs already in our city, you know, with Corteva and primarily, but others as well. So it's really great to add to that with the work that you're doing, and it's an absolutely beautiful building, and I love how you've, you've got a great landscape and really trying to incorporate that, so we really, really appreciate that.
Thank you. We are excited to be in Johnston. We feel like it's a good fit for us. It's not by accident that we're here. Our team wanted a location that they could ride their bikes, they could go for a walk, they could do all of those things, and when we found this location, it just seemed like the perfect fit for us. So we're excited to be here, and we're also very appreciative for the fact that you would consider issuing our tax-exempt bonds, and we're sure more than willing. I have Cheryl Ritter, our CFO, here. If you have any questions, you don't really have any liability to it, but we also wanted to be able to assure you that we are able to finance this building.
Well, I'll underscore what Councilmember Cope just said, you know, we are excited to have Life Serve moving, moving to Johnston. It's a, it's a, it's a very beautiful building, and really appreciate what you're doing with the natural environment around it as well. I think you have a groundbreaking plan?
Yes. August 23rd at 9:00 AM, you should all be getting invitations this week. We're hoping the mayor will join us in digging the fake dirt, because we're not actually doing the real groundbreaking.
What, there's no dirt out there?
We're going to have some dirt and shovels in a hard hat, so. But we're also going to have Ike Small's grandson, who happens to be a resident of West Des Moines, and he'll be joining us along with a blood recipient who's hopefully from Johnston, the highest gallon blood donor that we have in the city of Johnston, a team member, and so there'll be a big group that's doing it. So we hope you can all join us on August 23rd. You'll be getting an invitation this week.
Well, planning groundbreakings in the fall, you usually get a pretty decent turnout, you know, in November, December, November, November.
Nobody wants that.
Nobody wants to do that. This will be great, looking forward to it. When would the building be open, if you break down on the 23rd?
Our goal would be that we're moving towards the end of first quarter 2024. I would tell you, Hanson, that is our contractor, I think- would tell you Hanson, that is our contractor, I think they believe they'll be done earlier. We have, if you think about moving what we do, we have to move when we know we have a strong blood supply. So the idea of moving in December or January is not very exciting for us. So you'll see us, even if the building would be done, you would see us not move our manufacturing facilities, I think, until March or April where we have a stronger blood supply. Apply about 157 hospitals in three states and actually send across the country as well as internationally. So we have to think not only of the hospitals here in Des Moines, but the hospitals across the country.
Any other questions, council? If not, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Unlike, seeing none, we will close the public hearing then at 7:34. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-194?
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Congratulations. Looking forward to it. You bet. Thank you for being here. Moving on to the next item, item five, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Remove. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item seven, the non-consent agenda, item 7A. Consider second reading of ordinance number 1078, amending the municipal code of the city of Johnston, adopted by ordinance number 1010, passed March 4, 2019 by amending Chapter 100, Regulation of Industrial Waste Water, Commercial Waste Water, and Hulled Waste. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On our first reading, we had a few questions that we needed to collect some information. We did so, collected that, we sent, contacted the WRA. Tonight, we have with us Paul Ebert from the Des Moines WRA, as well as Shane Kinsey from the Water Sewer Department to help fill in any gaps that we may have. But are there any questions over the memo that was circulated on those answers? Or did they suffice for the explanation of those questions?
I appreciate you getting all of those answers, all that were involved in that. So thank you. I hope it doesn't come to this, quite frankly, but what happens, I know it was expressed multiple times, hey, you're a member of the WRA, you have to agree to these rate changes. What happens if we don't codify them? And from that matter, if we are then not part of that organization, do we have any options?
I will bring Paul up and let him answer that question. But because we are a member, I believe we do need to codify that. And as you can see, not only in this ordinance, but in the next, we're not increasing the fees, inspection fees. I know there's some minor fees here, but they don't affect any of the businesses or the commercial businesses here in town. Paul, would you like to address?
Thank you. So we tried to do our best there by answering that question there, I think, on number two. But yes, the member, 17 going on, 18-member communities as part of the WRA are required to adopt the ordinance. So this is reviewed in great detail at the WRA level, at the board level. There's a lot of information. I think I've presented two or three times in the last several months here on the details with any ordinance changes or anything like that to go over, hash those questions out and details and things like that. So there's a lot of stakeholder input that we have from this on these changes. So they're very well thought out and ironed out. But to answer a question, yeah, as part of the member agreement, the WRA member agreement, all the member communities are required to pass this.
And if a community no longer is a member, then what are their options?
That's maybe not a question for me to answer. That might be something the WRA director or legal staff may need to answer on that one.
Are you able to kind of give us an update of where other communities are who are WRA members as part of their consideration of these ordinances? Are they all kind of on the same timetable of second reading or further ahead, farther behind?
It's right about in the same mix, you know, as what you guys are here. The goal is to have the third reading and final reading done within the timeframe of September. So we've got some time to actually enact this. And I think the original presentation from two weeks ago, might have been my original presentation, the start date on that was tentatively September 1st. We were looking at the timeline for getting all of this passed within 18-member communities, including Grimes, like I said. We bumped that back to October 1st. So that will be the start date for the new rate and things like that.
But could you maybe explain, so there's this, is it relates to fog? So fats, oils, and greases. So how does that process work? It looks like if you're a, let's say you're a restaurant in town and you have a, so you're generating these greases, do you, do they then, they pump them out and then they go to a facility and then you have to pay for every time that you dump somewhere? Or how does that process? Where does the restaurant pay these fees?
Sure. You bet. I'd be happy to explain that. So a restaurant like you described generates the waste, it gets caught in a little trap or perhaps a tank outside, something like that. Septic tank at home collects the solids and the floatables and that we don't want in the sewer system. So every so often, depending on how much waste is going down your drain, that will fill up quicker or maybe not so quick. There's a huge variety across the metro area depending on the nature of the business there. Over time, that, like I said, that trap will fill up with food, solids, and fog. That needs to be cleaned out every so often. So there's a number of licensed haulers here in the metro area, probably two dozen or so. So they are the entities that go around and clean these traps out. And they have accounts with us. They will come in with their trucks, scale in and scale out, and we bill them based on the net weight. So those charges actually go to the licensed hauler and not directly to the restaurant. So whether or not, I can't manage their, how they're going to manage their billings on this with the minor rate changes.
And so could you then walk through, so for that, and I really appreciate it, that's a really good kind of explanation. But so for that licensed hauler, what is the rate change? What is the current rate that they pay? And I meant on a per pound basis?
It is per pound, but if we want to think of it in terms of gallons, say you have a 1,000-gallon tank, they pump that 1,000-gallon tank out, prior rate would cost them $19 to discharge that 1,000-gallon.
For a 1,000-gallon?
Yes, which is very inexpensive. The new rate will be $35. So it's going up $16 for a 1,000-gallon tank.
And has the rate been $19 for a fair, for quite a while?
We typically have increased that per the Consumer Price Index annually. But if you're looking at such a small rate, we're talking a penny and a half per gallon or something like that. I think it's, most reasonably, 1.8 cents per gallon. If you raise the rate 2% to 3% per year, that's still a relatively small amount, so.
Right. But obviously, going from 19 to 35 is almost 100% increase.
Sure. So to put this in comparison, the cost for disposing of septic tank waste is currently 16 cents per gallon. So the old fog rate was basically 2 cents per gallon. It's maybe raised to 3.5 cents. So it is still significantly low. This is very inexpensive to get rid of this waste. So if you look across the state of Iowa and even across the country and other municipalities that have, that take fog waste, even with the new rate, we're still the cheapest. And that's something that we pride ourselves on. We want to incentivize and keep that rate low to incentivize proper clean out and maintenance of these devices. We don't want it to cost a lot of money.
I believe in one of the responses to a question though, too, is that because I had posed a question at our last meeting, that was it then going to face an incremental increase? And if I remember correctly, please, please fill in some gaps here. It will increase now, it'll be frozen until a certain year, and then at that point, we'll continue to reflect a percentage annual increase moving forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
2025, is that the?
Yes, July 1st, 2025. So essentially, the rate is not going to change for three years. So the spirit of the rate change and kind of how we structured this is, other rates are kind of getting stepped up in thirds. We did the same thing for the fog rate, except that we're not stepping it up the next two rates. We're keeping it flat. We're not even increasing, you know, per price index annually. It's going to be that 3.5 cents for the next three years.
And you're Paul, right? The person who put together the PowerPoint? Okay.
Other questions, council?
I think to address Councilman Burkhardt's other concern that we are a collection system, and then we do send all of our waste to the WRA. So it'd be much like, if we were to not approve that, it would be, we wouldn't have anywhere to send our waste. Kind of liken it to Des Moines Water Works. That's where we buy all of our water since we're a distribution system. So aren't joining those folks, where would we get our water from?
Well, I think that it would be helpful to kind of have a sort of a sense of where the other cities are in that process. So before we have the third reading, if you, if we could get an update, maybe from the WRA, the other member cities, and, you know, they've either all approved it, or, you know, their first reading or second reading or third reading, that'd just be helpful so we can kind of know that.
At our last meeting, I remember what that one, I saw all three readings first night. Yeah. So we can certainly get back.
Okay. We'll get you additional information where the other.
Can you point, now that I have a tangible, I believe Shane, and I appreciate that quick response, it was a little over 600 of our current residential customers have septic, as far as I go. Can you paint some picture as to what then those costs would look like for an average septic user here in Johnston, as far as increase? You mentioned the 16 cents per gallon, pound? Per gallon. I don't have a septic system. So, but I know obviously 600 folks in Johnston do. What's this going to mean for them effective October 1st and then moving forward?
Great for septic material disposal to actually come down 2 cents. So it's going to be 14 cents per gallon. So that's an incentive for the customers who do have septic tanks, like myself at home, but not in Johnston. But so the actual disposal cost on that, if you take 16 cents per gallon, it's a 1,000-gallon tank, that's typical maybe for a septic tank, maybe somewhere 2,000 gallons. You're looking at roughly $160. Now, that's the disposal cost. That doesn't include the hauler cost and stuff like that. So when I pay for my septic tank at home, it probably costs me $500, maybe 600 to get that cleaned out. But that includes a hauler and disposal cost.
And while that cost is, immediate cost is going down, it also though will continue to reflect a price increase over time yearly, correct? Incrementally? Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Generally, the, on a septic tank, those are usually cleaned at the time of sale for time of transfer, or if you've got a failure and you need to clean that out and see what the issue is. So it's, I guess I would say it's not done on an annual basis for a septic tank to be cleaned out. I think about once every three years would be a good rule of thumb for maintenance on those.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1078?
Remove.
Motion and a second discussion. Any vote, please?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider second reading of ordinance number 1079, amending the schedule of administrative penalties for violations of the Industrial Pretreatment Ordinance regulating hulled waste and regulating fat, oil, and grease discharge by food service establishments in Chapter 100 of the Municipal Code of the City of Johnston.
Once again, we provided those fees. I noticed that we still misspelled it on one of the pages there. But the fees aren't increasing. We're actually just amending those and including in Chapter 100 for us. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question, Matt. I forgot to ask this last time. So what about those home-based businesses that do some kind of food thing? How do you regulate those guys?
Those aren't actually regulated through our department. David Gawn Clayton, do you know how those food businesses are regulated? Food-based businesses? Out of homes? They'd be, I know they'd be limited in operation by the state on what they're allowed to prepare in home. I'd have to look a little further on that.
I think you might advance this, Matt.
If there's a establishment, a home-based establishment, that is cooking food and preparing food for public for general sale and stuff like that, they wouldn't, that's not my department, but they would have to have a food license. At that time, they were also subject to the fat, oil, and grease surveillance, just as any other FSC would be.
Can you use the mic?
They wouldn't have the large, a lot of times expensive intersection. They do have methods, and the WRA has a very expensive process for reviewing the. There's a method for them, the home-based. They still have to meet the regulations because disposing that into the sewer would cause lots of issues for our residents. So they're still regulated under the WRA.
Other questions, council? Not, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1079?
Remove.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider Resolution Number 22-190, approving Johnson Town Center trellis located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Northwest 62nd Avenue and Merle Hay Road, PZK's 2226. Clayton?
The Johnson Town Center has long planned to have an entry feature at the intersection of Merle Hay Road and Northwest 62nd Avenue. And we have previously identified the location for that feature, which would be between the two commercial buildings currently under construction. We had not approved any architecture officially to date, though I believe we have previously seen these renderings as well. So this action item would officially approve the architecture so that they can commence construction on that trellis feature. It is completely constructed of wood minus some connector pieces in between, as such it would meet our town center design guidelines. It is an entirely Class II material, which would be classified as a high-quality material per architecture standards. Happy to answer any questions or go into further details needed.
Council have any questions for Clayton?
Clayton, I've been looking on page five of the attached materials, and it looks like, shows some sort of custom backlit signage that I thought had been moved out of the trellis and to the, I didn't think that was part of the design anymore.
So you are not approving any signage by this action item? Signage is shown simply for reference or illustrative purposes only?
Right, but we're not putting signage.
No, if you looked at the renderings, they're probably a better representation where they don't have that. Because you'll see your next council meeting.
I had a staff person teach me to never look at the renderings and only look at the drawings.
Good catch. But the, at your next council meeting, we'll have an action item regarding the signage, which would be that roof-based signage, because we will have to do an ordinance amendment to allow for that.
Right. So you got the roof base, the name, the words, but no, we're not intending to do the symbol thing, right?
No, that should not have been located on there.
Other questions for Clayton?
I guess I'm a little curious about something. And I want to say it was Councilman Evans, but it might have been Councilman Coke made some comments that one time when we were looking at this about making the trellis roof a little more substantial and not so deconstructed. Do you recall those comments?
I did not recall those. I did not recall those.
Oh, he's.
I'm here, I'm in your seat now.
Oh.
Which was formerly David's seat. Yes, I think that was made at a committee level conversation. OPN did look, come back and look at some ideas on that. Some of it was the signage, moving that to the roof as opposed to the medallion hanging off of it. I think some other comments at the time was bird droppings come off there. And I think there was added some anti-bird features on there. Beyond that, that would have required more substantial redesigns. So I think we circled back up the committee members after that committee discussion and said it was sufficient.
They did come back to the committee and had, and we said that? Because I, I feel like I've talked about this more than once. And I don't recall saying this was sufficient. And perhaps I'm, I'm not remembering.
I could be misremembering as well, but my recollection was before we looked at a more substantial redesign of the trellis canopy, we looked at the, the signage component, whether to do the.
Well, the signage component is much better. I guess, I'm not gonna, you know, fall on the sword for this. It's a little, it feels a little deconstructed, like I said, but I'm willing to go along with my councilman members. If, if they are pleased with what it looks like, I'll, I'm going to go along with it. I do think the bird, tacky bird strips, I, I have some doubts that they'll, they'll work. And that we'll probably have to come back later and fill in those openings to keep the birds from roosting up there. That seems minor that we could handle, so. So I'm, I'm not going to hold this up. I'm just saying, I, I had thought that it was going to be more substantial. Unfortunately, Councilman Evans is not here. So.
Clayton, one question and then one comment. Is, is there some sort of drain hidden in one of those columns or legs? I see obviously the slope is such and there's a drain on the roof, but where does it go from there? Am I missing that on a, or can you?
It goes down one of the columns on the, if you're looking at it from the intersection on the left-hand side, I believe, down, and it would connect into the storm sewer underneath there.
So, so it will, we will never see any kind of drainage leaving it whatsoever?
Shouldn't, minus a massive rain event, the, the rain system can't handle.
Okay. I also just want to make a comment. I appreciate, I, I had asked a, posed a question with regard to what the view would look like from that proposed kind of restaurant space on that second floor. And I appreciate very much an intentional rendering that included that. So thank you, whoever conveyed that to the, the right folks and that you provided that.
Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash one ninety?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven E, consider resolution number twenty-two dash one ninety-six, approving the site plans for Wolf Pack Pet Resort at fifty-seven hundred West Parkway. Aaron?
Tonight, we're seeking council approval of the site plans for a twelve thousand plus square foot pet resort and spa, offering boarding, daycare, outdoor exercise areas, grooming and retail sales. And all of this is on a property in the West Park Plan Unit Development at fifty-seven hundred West Parkway. And you can see on the overhead there, it's in red, just north of the, of the existing water tower. And the city council approved an amendment to the West Park PUD last December that would allow animal boarding on this property. And that, of course, cleared the way for consideration of the site plan tonight. As you can see on the overhead, West Parkway is a loop street that fronts this property both to the north and to the east. There are two points of entry to the site, and one comes from the north and one from the east frontage. When that pops up, you'll be able to see that on the overhead. Parking is in compliance with code requirements with twenty-seven parking spaces required and thirty-three provided. Twenty-five percent of the site area or fifteen thousand six hundred plus square foot is required to be maintained as open space, and the site plans are in compliance. Site plans are also in compliance with the open space planning requirements. There are no buffer requirements affecting this property as all of the adjoining properties share the same zoning designation. Then if you would. The architectural requirements of code requires at least seventy-five percent of the law area excluding glass consists of a combination of brick, architectural concrete panels, textured concrete block or architectural steel or stone panels. And the proposed architectural materials for this building include a band of brick along the bottom and insulated metal wall panels and a metal roof. And the site plans indicate all exterior animal exercise areas will be fenced. To the east and west, fencing will be six-foot solid vinyl. And to the south, a six-foot chain-linked fence with vinyl privacy slats will be utilized. Lastly, stormwater is accommodated onsite by a basin that will be constructed in the southeast corner of the site. There are a handful of conditions that were imposed upon your approval, all of which are fairly standard. I do have the applicant's design engineer in the audience with us tonight, Shane Divic from Civil Engineering Consultants, and the applicant is with us tonight as well. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those now, or we can turn it over to the applicant if you have questions for them.
Counsel, have any questions for Aaron?
I have a quick question on this. So can you go back to that rendering of the visiting map? So the plots or the plots around it, are those residential or the empty lots?
No, these will be, you have lots on the east side of West Parkway. These are commercial plots. These plots here are existing townhome units. So eventually there will be other buildings constructed in between the used, both used townhome units up here.
And the ones, the eastern, western south of that new construction also is commercial?
Yes.
Five four, five six zero zero?
Yes.
Okay. That's all right. I thought that might be residential, might be a issue later, but.
Aaron, I have a question about the dog waste. In a facility of this type, how is the dog waste handled? I'm assuming there's quite a bit of it. How do they handle that?
I'm going to turn that over to the applicant. I think this question came up previously, and I'm going to let her go ahead and address that.
Heather Leslie. And yes, I think we might have spoke about that once before, but I have contacted, because I use Ankeny sanitation currently at another property that I own. And I contacted them to ask them what are the proper procedures for disposing of dog waste? And basically, I can wrap it all up in a garbage bag and put it in my waste container that they will come and pick up.
Okay.
Thought maybe there would be a different procedure or something for it too, but no, that's not what they told me. They told me is bag it up and put it in my garbage. So.
And I, I haven't, I'm just kind of interested, those exterior areas for the dogs, are you putting down on artificial turf, like one of those dog turfs?
Yeah, some of the areas, like the outside play areas for the dog daycare rooms will be artificial turf. There are some outdoor runs that the dogs are able to go out to during the day that connect to their kennels. Those will most likely have artificial turf in them. The other outdoor runs that we'll have for the dog areas, some will be artificial turf. Some will probably have key gravel in them and some might be regular grass.
And do you know from the architect, are those areas going to drain into the detention area? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Yes. Heather, while you're here, I, and I, this is again a very naive question, but it stemmed from reading about, obviously, placement and request of having a Knox box installed for quick access in case of emergency. You obviously will have live critters there that we would hate in case of emergency to, you know, perish in that regard. How does a business like this, that is going to have a lot of live animals, consider or manage their emergency plan when it comes to communicating that to first responders? Is there anything different that's expected of either the emergency response to try to maintain the lives of as many animals as possible? God forbid there's a fire.
God forbid, I don't want this to happen. It happened to a facility in Texas this past year, and I'm going to get teary-eyed over that. So I hope that. There is nothing that IDLS requires us, because we actually have to follow all of the rules of IDLS. And there is nothing that they require for us to do. Obviously, we are being required to have it sprinkled, which I wanted to do in the first place. And then we will have a system, and I haven't figured out exactly what I'm using or anything like that, but we will have a system where we are able to see the inside of the facility and that from our homes. I actually currently live over in Coming. My daughter is also my partner in this, and she is actually going to be moving, hopefully, just down the street, I hope, in Johnston, once we have this facility up and running. So we will be looking to place her, hopefully, right down the street so that one of us is able to get there immediately. We are planning to be there personally with an employee or one of us from approximately six o'clock in the morning to approximately nine o'clock at night. So they will only be left, you know, from nine to six by themselves. But again, things happen, I understand that. All I can say is, I, I hope we have all the correct procedures put in place and that nothing, nothing does go wrong. We have been to another facility in Johnston and did some, basically like a camp, trying to learn all the ins and outs from an expert there that has been doing this for over thirty-some years. Plus, he builds and designs, and I'm actually hired him to build and design this along with Shane and that. But they just told us different, different procedures and different things and different ways to, to try to protect the animals and that. So I'm a huge animal lover, so I will do everything I can to protect those dogs in our care.
Thank you.
I have a question, it might be for your, your architect. I'm just trying to get a layout of the building. I'm, I'm looking at page fifteen from the staff report. Yeah, there's, that's, that's probably the, not, not the, not the elevations. It's kind of strange because the elevations, this is, this is an interesting building because elevations usually do a really good job of giving you a sense of what the outs of the physical building is. But as, an important part of this facility is also all the outside stuff, right? So it's kind of hard to see the whole thing. But so if I'm looking at, it's page fifteen in the staff report, the staff right there. Yeah, scroll back, scroll back, no, the other way. Keep going, right there. So as I look at kind of the, the layout of the building and I see there's like three or four, it's called play yards. One, three, two, and so certain number of square feet. And then just to the right of each of those, there's those kind of rectangular open areas. No, it's right above them. No, 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 right? Actually, if you draw a straight line from where you had your finger before. So the play area number three, you see that? Play yard, yep. Okay, just keep going, keep, you're moving your finger in a straight line, right there. So what is that?
These are daycare rooms inside of the building.
Daycare, okay. So, so how many dogs would you have, or cats or snakes or whatever? I don't know.
These all are approximately, like, over eight hundred square feet.
Okay.
And for I don't have one dog, I have to have sixteen or fifteen.
Okay.
Approximately have about sixteen dogs. Oh, that's.
Okay.
So I can approximately this on.
So those would be kennels in essence?
No, these will not be kennel. These are open play, open play areas.
Okay. So I'm like, almost like a fenced area?
Well, these are rooms inside, and then we have the garage doors that open to go to the outside
Okay.
play areas for them. So this would be outside, and they're all fenced off so that we keep the correct number of dogs in each area.
So in that, in those areas, you, you could have up to sixteen dogs in each of those rooms, correct? And they would, so they'll be like individually fenced inside of those?
These will be individually walled. There's a wall here and a wall here.
Right. So how do you keep the sixteen dogs in that room separate from each other?
The playground.
They're just all there, they're all?
No, it's a, this is daycare. So these are daycare rooms, so you're taking your dog to daycare, and they're going to play with other dogs in daycare.
This is not part of the boarding, okay?
No, this is not part of the boarding at all. Nope. Boarding is all these here. These are all boarding rooms.
Okay, okay, okay. So, so obviously you've got a lot going on here.
Got a lot going on.
We have dogs. So, so basically, if you, if you needed a place to board your dogs during the day, you could, that was where they would go and they could be there and they could play, and they could go in and out. That's kind of the concept.
These over here will have, these are the boarding rooms. And these are all approximately about, I think they're four or five foot by like eight foot, each one of these boarding rooms. These are on the backside, and over here are able to go in and out on their own during the daytime. But then we will also take them out into these other play areas.
Okay.
Those dogs can either be put in those play areas on their own, or if they're okayed and evaluated that they can be with the other dogs and owners are okay with it, then they would be put with other dogs.
But those are all, all those things you just described, those are people who are bringing their dogs for three or four days.
Right, exactly.
They're going out of town.
Right. These are just people that are coming to daycare just during the day and they'll go home.
Right, okay. Okay, that's helpful. I, I really look forward, I mean, presuming this all moves, which I would expect, so look forward to the ribbon cutting and touring it, because it's, it's, we don't have, I mean, maybe we do have a loties in Johnston, I don't know. But it's, it's definitely different than a, like a kid daycare type facility or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'll have, you know, different play yard.
Behaviors in some ways are sort of similar.
We're also going to have a splash area for the dogs here. So like, you know, the little splash pads that you have for the children to go to, we'll have that for the dogs on outside too. We'll have a cattery, so the cats can be boarded there too, in the grooming area and.
Bet you'll attract feral cats.
Had to get it in, didn't you?
Other questions for the applicant or for Aaron? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash one ninety-six?
Some mood. Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Send your vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
When do you expect to break ground?
Our second engineers are finishing up the final plan right now. I'll have them from them in a month, and then go to my bank. Break from there, and then, frankly, not too busy. Little bit, so I'm not trying to rush it, I'm going to try to make sure I'm seeing it right, but I don't want to be a butcher for everything either. So I expect this week, so that's all.
Okay. Well, you look forward to.
Thank you.
Doggone good project.
Item seven F, consider resolution number twenty-two dash one ninety-seven, a resolution approving a temporary use permit to utilize temporary space office trailers at eighty-four oh four Northwest Sixty-Second Avenue.
The Community Choice Credit Union and Community Choice Admin Building are scheduled to undergo an interior remodel. And I could have provided a better vicinity map here, but this would be at the southeast intersection of Northwest Eighty-Sixth Street and Northwest Sixty-Second Avenue.
Or you can just drive by right now and see the trailers.
The trailers are there. And so when the trailer showed up, we contacted the credit union and said, hey, there's a process we have to go through here. And that's why we're here tonight. There, these two buildings are going to undergo an interior remodel, and the office personnel will be relocated out of the buildings to these temporary office facilities that will be delivered to the parking lot adjacent to the credit union.
They have been delivered.
And they're, they're assembled, they come, they're four individual trailers and are assembled into one unit. And from a. And from a zoning perspective, the use is considered a temporary use and a permit is required. And per our chapter one seventy-three of our code ordinances, the city council may grant such a permit. And the applicant has provided these site photos as an exhibit. Also, the previous vicinity map that I had up there, the red square on that map shows where the trailer, yep, that red square shows where the trailer relocation is. It does displace some parking, but there was excess parking on the site in an amount that is equal to the offset. So it shouldn't impact the parking for this facility. And the total project is expected to extend to January of twenty-twenty-three. The applicant intends to remove the trailers by the end of the twenty-twenty-two calendar year, and the special use permit would be valid for a period of six months, which ends around that same time frame. So what you would be approving tonight is a temporary use permit to allow the placement of these temporary job site trailers on the site.
Any questions for Erin?
I was driving down Eighty-sixth Street or up, and I saw these things, and I said, what the heck are these? So I drove over there, I think it was Saturday or Sunday. So there's like four of them.
Yes.
And they're like half. So they intend to put them together to make two buildings?
I think it's going to be one building altogether. I think what you're looking at, I don't know if I got very good pictures, but two of those, I think, are mid-sections, middle sections.
Okay.
So I think they all go together to form one.
Okay.
One unit. And we did, we did a similar thing when we had the hailstorm last year and a number of these businesses came to town on a temporary basis, and we had to look at those and review them for a certain number of criteria, and parking is one of them, make sure they have restroom facilities available, things of that nature. So we did do something similar last year when that event happened.
Erin, will that occupy the parking lot? How much parking lot will that occupy?
That is approximately, I want to say fifteen parking spaces.
And that is, that parking space is the credit union parking space?
Yes.
Okay.
Erin, I know that you identified, or the applicant identified restroom facilities will also be in a, kind of fifth trailer, so to speak. You can pretty much count on me to take our conversation there anyway, but the reality is, are these restrooms going to be locked or protected in such a way so that they don't face damage or destruction that we face in our public restrooms at parks and things like that?
That, that I don't know. They did, the, the information they provided said that the restroom facilities, they're delivered on a trailer, it's this, it's provided by a king's throne, I don't know, maybe two, three years ago, there was a remodel at the Quick Trip, which is now the Hy-Vee convenience store right at the, at the gate of our entryway to our town on Merle Hay Road. They did an interior remodel and utilized a similar system, this king's throne, it's a little bit nicer than a porta potty. And I don't know how they secure those in the evening, and I don't know if, I don't have anybody here from the applicant tonight, so I don't have a good answer to that question. But certainly, they're, they're owned by the company that owns the units. I would think that they have some measures in place because they wouldn't want to incur the property damage. If you need me to follow up on that, I can with an email.
I wouldn't mind just an informal email.
Okay.
Other questions for Erin?
Erin, will there be a building gluing ceremony that we can attend? That one you don't need to pull.
Instead of cutting the ribbon, we're going to grab a ribbon.
Yes, exactly. Ribbon cinching ceremony.
Since there are no other questions, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash one ninety-seven?
Same move.
Second.
Motion and second for the discussion. Send a vote please.
Councilmember Koch?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven G, consider allowing the fire department to start design of a new rescue fire engine.
Counsel, looking for guidance. I talked to Teresa about this, she said, well, we should probably get permission from the council and direction. Everybody hears about the supply chain issues, well, we're not exempt in purchasing fire apparatus. In the past, we've known that, you know, ambulances would take more than a year, now that's looking at two years. We have planned for the purchase of a new fire rescue engine in the fiscal year twenty-five, and it's in the CIP and the CEP. But normally, we don't start the process until we get much closer than we are now. Talking to the manufacturer that we plan to use and using the Houston Galveston Consortium as far as a purchase, they're now telling us we're twenty-six to twenty-eight months out from a build as soon as we sign the contract. And so since we're that far out, we want to get started as soon as possible. We normally have a process, we bring a group of firefighters together, and deputy chief to oversee the process. They start specifying what we want as far as size compartments and engine, all of that, and put it all together, and then get the quotes from the manufacturer. In order to beat the next expected price increase, which is January, we need to get started now so that we can get all this done in the next few months, and then by the end of this calendar year, get a contract to bring back before the council with a resolution to sign the contract, to enter in the agreement to purchase this engine that we won't be receiving until calendar year twenty-five, possibly twenty-six. So we just want to get direction from the council to go ahead and move forward with that process.
So Chief, what you're proposing here would lock in our price this year, but we wouldn't start making payment on it until we receive it.
Until it's delivered. Generally, what they've done in the past is they've given discounts to prepay for either the chassis or prepay for the entire vehicle. But the percentages that they're giving for those discounts do not equal what the seven percent and the seven and a half percent raises in price that they implemented this current calendar year. So in January of this year, they had a seven percent price increase. We were able to purchase the ladder truck and sign the contract last fall to prevent us from receiving that, that huge price increase. It turned around in April, had another seven and a half percent price increase. And talking with all the rest of the fire chiefs, they're all saying the same thing. There was a group email that went out about ambulances, and there's people signing contracts that aren't getting their ambulances for two years and they're receiving price increases in between. So again, if we want to save, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more on the price of this vehicle, we want to get the process started now so that we can get it locked in with the, a contract before the end of this calendar year and the next price, anticipated price increase.
But Chief, is this the ladder truck, or is this?
This is a, the heavy rescue engine. We're replacing the two thousand nine that Johnson owns, and so we're looking to, again, we had a plan for fiscal year twenty-five, but we need to start it, which seems awful early when you're in calendar year twenty-two, but that's just how far they are out now, twenty-six to twenty-eight months.
Is this a piece of equipment that we would envision that we, the city of Johnson would be paying a hundred percent of, or we would be sharing it?
At this point, yes. And, and it's been planned for in that fiscal year in the CIP. Those are discussions that are going to happen with the fire board, with the twenty-eight E, and as we move forward with, with the agreement, so.
But the intention is, no matter what, that this would be a hundred percent paid with?
At this point, yes. And again, to lock in the contract, I don't know that.
That's something that...
Couldn't be something that could be negotiated for a partial payment or by the formula or whatever.
Because we had, there's some discussion, and I, I'm not as knowledgeable about all the different equipment that we have. We've been talking about at some point, we're going to have to get in ladder truck as well. So that's a different piece of equipment.
Yes.
And that's what we potentially could be sharing the cost with. And also, just from a standpoint of two thousand and nine, we replaced in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, so these equipments, pieces of equipment don't last twenty years, is that the deal?
Yeah, generally, that's what we're looking at, twenty years. My goal is that with continued partnership, we would be able to have something frontline, have one rescue engine frontline for ten years, and then in reserve for ten years. So we'd still get the same twenty years that we're getting now. But our problem is that we, as we increase the number of calls, and then moving from a volunteer to a paid-on-call department to a full-time department, the amount of hours and the amount of miles that we're putting on are far more than when it was planned for a full twenty years. So if we can get to where we offset the similar rescue engine that Grimes purchased in twenty-sixteen, this will line up so that it'll be about ten years apart. So then the goal would be to move it to the middle station, go both directions, still have this frontline for ten years, Grimes would still have theirs for another ten years in reserve. When this one gets the oil changed or has repairs or whatever, we'd still have another similar rescue capability to move into that spot. And then Grimes or JGMFD would replace that other one ten years down the road when it's twenty years old.
So between the two cities, we would have two of these types of?
Yes. Which we currently do.
Right.
It's just moving this up.
We would buy this new one in two thousand and nine, we would sell. We're not going to keep that and move that to the middle fire station.
We would sell that.
Okay, that's helpful, appreciate your background on that.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for interrupting. When we plan to retire these trucks and, and sell them, is that kind of built into your budgets overall with regard to these?
Yeah, we generally give an estimated cost and then give that to finance, and then they plug that into the overall budget.
Okay.
So there's some offset. Unfortunately, the amount is not anywhere close to what the new ones cost.
Certainly, thank you.
Questions? Teresa, this seems to make sense. Do you have any concerns? If there are no other questions, do we have a motion to give the fire department direction to start design of a new rescue fire engine?
Same move.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. Send a vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhard?
Yes.
Koch?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item seven H, consider approval of claims in the amount of one million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
Same move.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Send a vote please.
Councilmember Burkhard?
Yes.
Koch?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. City Administrator Staff Comments, we've covered everything, I think, except for item eight C, discussion of senior board applicants. John?
Good evening. At the last council meeting, you probably remember, we had just a brief discussion on the senior board, and I was looking for support as far as looking at additional applications and that. I am happy to say that we now do have twelve applications in hand, which is more than enough to fill the board. We have a seven female, male, five male applications. We are looking at probably the August fifteenth council meeting to start moving forward with that, but I did want to come back in case there was any more communication since that last meeting before we start moving forward with this board.
John, we have seven female and five male?
That is correct.
Like, we need one more male for equity.
Well, if we, if we went to a full thirteen, but now...
How many people are you going to put on the board?
What's that?
How many people will be on the board?
The, the ordinance is nine.
Right, so you're not going to pull...
I'm going to be reaching out to Christine a little bit and talking about where we can go with this, because currently, our ordinance is two years and nine members. We've already made the decision that we would prefer to have just a one-year kind of test, since this is, is really all new people, and a lot of them are really not wanting to commit completely to the board yet without having a better understanding of what direction it's going to go. So we've had some ideas thrown around, Jim and I have talked a little bit, would this be a full board, would it just be more or less a one-year test committee or what, what it would be called, but what direction it needs to go. So once again, nine is the number that we were aiming for, but we can go up to however many we want if, if conversations with Christine this week goes how we want.
I'm not really sure what you need us to say. Nine seems fine with me, so.
I just didn't know if you had any other people, any other interests that were there after the final, after the discussion. Once again, if you remember, we, we talked about, obviously, gender balance, which we, we can create that gender balance. We don't have a strong diversity within this board. In fact, the members that attend the Crown Point, the senior meal site, is not a diverse group. So that's one of the first things that I'm going to be challenging the group throughout this first year is, how do we get more diversity with attendance, with usage and that, not just the program, the, or the meal program, but overall? So how can we reach out there and do activities that, that would get more people involved?
So, John, with the one-year appointment, all, all the people that we've been, we've, if we go that direction?
Correct.
All of the people that would be appointed initially would be just appointed to the one-year term?
Right.
Then as they...
July first.
As they determine, you know, what, where they, where they think the board should go, then some decision at some point would be made on what those terms would be and how many members would be on the board.
Correct.
One of the things that we've talked about is having some opportunity to be flexible with the number of appointments and having it no less than nine.
No more than thirteen.
No more than thirteen, so that we'd have some flexibility there on, on the number based on the interest of participation. But that would require some...
If that means completely redoing the ordinance and having three readings of the, of a new ordinance, that would be the direction. The key is we want to get the thing...
I'm not sure, having nine, thirteen people on board, that makes, one, you gotta, what I would suggest is maybe you have, you appoint, so you got nine, right? So five of them you appoint to any two-year term, four of them you appoint to a one-year term, and that way you have, not everybody expires at the same time. I don't, I don't, it's not, I, I, I don't know why you'd have to get thirteen people on board.
I think that's longer term, the direction that we were going to go.
Part of it is to get this moving this first year and to have as much input as possible within this first year.
And we have several of them that have said, I'll do it for a year just to get this thing started, participate in the brainstorming about, you know, what this board's goals and mission is, but I don't want to, I don't want to commit to more than a year.
And that's why we're kind of juggling, is this truly a board we're appointing, or is this something else? So those are the things that we want to explore over the next week and a half and, and get that defined. We want your input if there was more, more you wanted us to do to reach out to get the diversity in that. Or I think part of the key right now is we, we've got a group of eleven, we just got the twelfth one today, we got a group of eleven that are ready to go and ready to start work on this. And I don't want to keep delaying this much further. I want to get moving in August here and, and have a meeting and, and start really starting, getting this organized again.
And in looking at the applicants that we have so far, we've got some good, actually some pretty good diversity, geographic diversity across the community. We have some clustering around Crown Point, which we would expect, but if you get beyond the three or four that are right there, close to Crown Point, we do have some pretty good distributions throughout the, throughout the community. We don't have good ethnic diversity.
Ethnic diversity.
So it'd be great if we could fill one more spot.
Do we have somebody who's applied for a different board or commission who might be, meet that definition that we could, who would also be a senior? I mean, have you looked at any of those applications?
I'd have to check with Dave. I, we did not for either the tree or the park board, but...
But there was other boards and commissions?
Yeah, that's why I said I'd have to check with Dave and see.
That might be a source of people to be named, I don't know.
I think part of the key is we do have the gender and we do have the interest diversity. So we do have the interest diversity. So we don't, we don't have everybody wanting to play cards, we don't have everybody wanting to play pickleball. We do have a, a mix of interests of activities that they'll get involved with. And those were the two key things, uh, areas I was looking for, but obviously, that doesn't represent our community. So I wanna get to that point, but I also don't wanna delay this anymore.
So if you have any suggestions within the next couple of weeks, uh, please give those to John. In the meantime, he'll be working with Christine to look at some language changes that we need to uh, kind of go in the direction that we're proposing to go here in, in the short term.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other staff comments this evening? If not.
Ready?
I pass, thanks.
Uncle?
Um, two things. Um, we had a couple of former members of the council in the audience tonight, and uh, Saturday I ran into another former member of our city council, John Temple of the uh, Hy-Vee, and he looks great, he seems to be doing well, and so just wanted to pass that along. Second of all, uh, uh, we've brought another state championship to the city of Johnson since our last meeting. The boys' baseball uh, team won the state championship, had a chance to go to Iowa City for the game, and sat in, in right behind superintendent Laura Kaser, and followed up with some exchange of emails about encouraging a lot of collaboration between the city. One thing she passed on to me that I thought was a really good um, example of collaboration is, is that when we did the interviews for the SROs, we incorporated her into that interview process, which I thought was really, really good. And so, just kinda wanted to kinda see, I thought that, that giving that, I think that's great, and that's really positive, kind of burst down some silos that I think kind of exist, so just wanted to salute whoever was kind of part of making that decision, because I think that that was a really good thing, so.
I, I echo all the sentiments of, of Councilmember Koch. I, I am going to start sounding like Councilmember Martin, however, here in just a second. The pickleballers have found me. Uh, I don't know if it's because of, uh, you know, Councilmember Martin. However, uh, you, rest assured, you'll continue to hear a, a larger vocal stance from me with regard to access to pickleball, um, throughout our city, not just in, in some of our current locations. Uh, and, and where I'm really getting uh, that feedback too, is when I try to encourage them that there are lovely courts in our neighboring communities, they quickly inform me, all of those are full. Um, so, um, I, I, I think we need to, to take a look at this, it's beyond a fad, so. Sounds good, thank you.
Koch?
Um, I just have, so Cindy, you and I had a quick conversation about the strategic planning doodle poll, and you told me to ignore it, am I?
You, you are correct. We're, we're gonna look at some other dates.
So I'm just gonna totally ignore that poll, I'm not responding to it at all.
Perfect.
Uh, that's all I had.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And I think you've probably all heard from me enough tonight, so I will uh, pass as well. Anything else for the good of the order, John?
If you want us to sign up, email you or email Janet or.
Janet.
Okay.
Thanks for the reminder. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned. Thanks all.